Do a quick sound check, no echoes. Hello, everyone. Howlin', Squallin', Quiz, Tlicknamatla, Squamish, Ohmeo. I'm councillor Chris Peddingle, serving as acting mayor for the month of February. And as a result, I'll be chairing this committee of the whole for Tuesday, February 13th. And welcome to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. Please be advised that this council meeting is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be available for the public to view on the district website following the meeting. If you have concerns, please notify the corporate officer present at the meeting. And with that, I will ask for someone to move adoption of the agenda with one small reminder about coldest night of the year. We'll start the meeting with councillor French moves. Councillor Hamilton, seconds. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to remind folks that coldest night of the year is coming up on February 24th. So encourage everyone to sign up a team. It's a really great family friendly walk in support of local charities, supporting people who are experiencing hurt, hunger, and homelessness. Maybe offline council, we can talk if we want to team. I've already started one with my partner, but you know, maybe I can be convinced to switch or do something there with council, but we can talk about that after. And just thanks to Helping Hands, it sounds like a fantastic event. And I'll just note that councillors Stoner and Mayor Hereford are at a provincial housing summit, so they will not be joining us today, but we appreciate their efforts on housing for us. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Philip to speak to the short-term rental regulatory program.
Thanks very much. So through the chair, good afternoon, committee members. My name's Asia Philp. I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. And today I'll be presenting the year three short-term rental program review for your input and discussion. So the objectives for the program review are to, one, present the key findings from our STR data tracking over the past year. Two, review the recent provincial STR legislation and how it impacts the district. And three, discuss the program targets and recommendations for 2024, including STR-related bylaw amendments. So I'll go through a quick recap on our STR regulations as a refresher for everyone. Our regulations were developed through a two-year planning and public engagement process, through which we landed on a more restrictive precautionary approach to regulating, only allowing the short-term rental in principal residences and excluding the short-term rental in suites and coach houses in order to protect the long-term rental housing supply in our community. To soften the impacts on the tourism sector, we created a secondary approval stream and created a limited number of non-principal residence licenses. And this is enabled through our temporary use permit process. So this graphic shows the spectrum of regulatory options considered in the STR program development. The more permissive options are to the left, the more restrictive options are to the right. And the district's chosen principal residence approach is circled by the dotted line here, focusing on the principal residents only. So the first key finding from last year's data tracking is that STR units and listings are still rising. This is a continuation and an acceleration from the trend we saw in 2022 going into 2023. In Q4 of 2023, there were approximately 300 STR units in the district. This compares to about 200 seen in Q4 of 2022, which is a 50% increase in one year. It's estimated that suites and accessory dwelling units continue to represent a significant portion of the STR inventory in Squamish. Staff conducted a search through the descriptions of local STR listings on Airbnb for the term suite, and we found a total of 56 results. On the licensing and compliance side, approximately 48% of all known STR units have acquired a business license. This is very similar to the 49% compliance rate we saw in 2022. The district issued 146 STR licenses in 2023. This is an increase of 50 licenses up from 2022. Enforcement activity in 2023 was similar to that in 2022. We received 38 public complaints, 103 properties were flagged for enforcement, 25 warning letters were sent out, and 18 fines were issued. In the fall of 2023, the province enacted their Short-Term Rental Accommodation Act to give local governments stronger tools to enforce STR bylaws and to establish a new provincial role in the regulation of short-term rentals. Key highlights from the provincial STR legislation include a provincial principal residence requirement, which limits STRs to a host principal residence plus one secondary suite or accessory dwelling unit. The provincial principal residence requirement is intended to be a floor or a minimum standard for regulating STRs. The district's regulations are more restrictive and do not permit STR secondary suites or accessory dwelling units. The province will be setting up their own provincial short-term rental registry, and they'll be enforcing their minimum standard through that. The province has also increased the maximum municipal ticketing fine that a local government may set from 1,000 to 3,000 per infraction per day. And lastly, the province has committed to data sharing and will be requiring STR platforms to share information about STR listings with the province, who will then relay this data to the local governments. So the critical piece of this data sharing is that if a listing does not include a valid business license number, the STR platform must remove the listing at the request of the local government. So going into year four, 2024, staff are recommending amending the short-term rental accommodation definitions in our zoning and business license bylaws to align with the province's definition for short-term rentals. So this would entail us changing our definition from less than 30 days to less than 90 days. Some operators in the district currently comply with our STR bylaws, and they avoid obtaining a license by listing their unit on a platform for a minimum 30-day stay. Currently, we have 65 of these 30-day-plus listings in the district. Changing the STR definition from less than 30 days to less than 90 days could further disincentivize the short-term rental of these units. To strengthen enforcement, staff are also recommending increasing our municipal ticket information bylaw fine from the amount currently set at $500 to $3,000 per infraction per day, applying the province's recent STR legislation change to increase our fine amount. And lastly, staff are recommending a review of license categories and fee rates in the fall of 2024, with a consideration towards eliminating the monthly license categories and updating the annual license categories and fee rates to reduce our administrative work and to increase licensing compliance heading into 2025. So that concludes the presentation portion of the year three program review, and I'll pass it back to the chair for questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, questions? Councillor French?
Thanks, Chair. I'm curious to know a little bit about the complaints that are being accepted by the bylaw department. Of the complaints that we're fielding, are we getting like 99% of those from two people? Or is it more spread out and sort of all over town or just restricted to one particular? Anything you could share about that, I think would be helpful?
Through the chair, it's different people. But if you have a house that's being used as an Airbnb in a certain neighborhood, we do get multiple complaints from surrounding houses.
Okay, and I'm curious to know the source of the complaints. Are they sort of a mix of a little bit of everything? Or are you getting a disproportionate number of complaints about noise or parking or other issues?
Through the chair, they're mostly about the Airbnb use. So they see frequent visitors coming to a home. Most recently, sometimes they'll say, well, garbage collection isn't or totes aren't being collected and garbage is not being collected from the owners. The garbage cans are still out on the street. But the majority of their complaints are about the flow of people coming to the home.
Thanks. Okay, I'll try a couple of my own and give council a chance to ponder their own questions. When I looked at the numbers, it does seem that there is an uptick in, I guess, violation of our bylaws even relative to the growth of permitted suites. And I'm just wondering, do we, should we expect a request for more bylaw enforcement funding in the budget, or do we feel with the new fines, it'll cover that? Or do we feel we need to ramp up enforcement?
Through the chair, I'll start and then I'll pass it to Frank and Megan if they want to add anything. We are hopeful that with the province coming on board and setting up this data sharing with Airbnb and other platforms and the ability that we'll now have to request Airbnb to delist licenses or listings that are unlicensed, that that will really help with the enforcement piece. So the province is very much getting into the game and stepping up.
Did you like to add, would you like to add anything?
Through the chair, no. Interested to see how it'll all play out with the province's role in it, with the delisting.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just wondering, I mean, we've put a lot of emphasis, it seems, on education and warnings and so on, but it's been a couple of years now. And given the numbers we're seeing, I'm wondering if we think we should maybe start moving to fines more quickly?
Through the chair. Yeah, we normally start off with a friendly letter, and then we escalate from there and go into the tickets.
And is there any thought that we should maybe, you know, be a little more aggressive, given the numbers we're seeing?
Through the chair, I think we should still do, or there is that option to still do the educational letters, and then maybe wrap up to enforcement a little bit sooner. Like provide the homeowner with a letter, give them a week to comply. And if we're not seeing compliance, then start with the ticketing ability.
Mr. Valaniskas?
Just want to add to the previous question around rate of compliance. And one of the actions we're proposing is to review the fees as well. And hopefully that will, part of the objective would be to incentivize compliance through, you know, lower barrier to making the application.
Ms. Philip?
Yep. Coming back to the latest question about enforcement, being able to have the power to request the delisting from the platform should give us, like, we may not even need to find, we'll just get their listing taken down. So we can avoid some of that interaction with the host, and it's kind of going directly to the platform.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Greenlaw?
Yeah, thanks. Through the chair, on that note, this delisting through the platform, will that be something that becomes automated? Or is the onus still on our staff to have to comb through the listings and find the ones that don't have business license?
Yep, through the chair. So we, Frank and I had initial meetings with provincial staff that are tasked with setting up the province's interactive system and how we will work with the province. And they're setting up a system where we'll be able to go in and request the delisting kind of through the province with just a click of a button. The province may be looking for feedback from us in that, have you sent them a letter? Have you had any interactions with the host prior to show that there has been some slight escalation before just automatically jumping to the delisting? Just so, I think they want to know that we've done our due diligence to confirm that they are indeed in non-compliance before we jump to the delisting.
Okay, so just to be clear, like, staff will go through, find listings that don't have a business license on it, and then the property owners will be issued a letter saying, hey, you're in non-compliance. And then, following that, contacting the province. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Anderson?
Thank you. From the staff report, data sharing and platform accountability, there's a reference to if a listing does not include a valid business license. About a year and a half ago, a situation came forward, I know, to staff and to bylaw enforcement about a concierge service, a platform, being offered on social media that did not have a business license. My question is, and this, I wouldn't wish to name that firm or that business, but there may be others. To what extent are we monitoring the platforms in addition to the rental units for compliance, not least with business licenses? And just keeping track of the landscape of what platforms are out there, including on social media?
Through the chair. So we still have host compliance, our third-party monitor. And they are looking for any and all platforms that if there's a shifting landscape and new ones crop up that people are using, then host compliance is active and trying to identify those. And they have scraping tools where they are keeping track of all of the units. We're expecting that with the data sharing agreement between the different platforms in the province that we'll be able to get the data that identifies the addresses and the number of nights that they've been rented and so on and so forth.
Thank you. The Tourism Squamish letter that's been copied to us refers to research showing that units with three, four, or more bedrooms are the fastest-growing type of STR unit in Squamish. Might this mean that, as regards to this trend, that this might mean a look at how we, I'm going to again quote from the Tourism Squamish, "how we are being clear and consistent to all homeowners rather than singling out people who own homes for secondary suites, or we say those who own multiple homes." And some of those in the category of three and four bedroom might be in there. But are there trends that suggest that we might look at Tourism Squamish's suggestions about definition and consistency going forward?
Through the chair. So we're updating our definitions to be consistent with the province's definition for short-term rental. And in terms of attempting to be consistent, we've always had the same messaging that it's allowed in your principal residence, and that's it. Not in suites and coach houses. We've just had that messaging through the whole thing. So I think that we have been consistent in the past, and we'll continue to deliver on that same message.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Councillor Hamilton?
Thanks very much. It's indeed very exciting to see that the province is coming to the table on this, particularly in the data sharing side of things. I have some concern that if we have, if we have a different definition of an STR, basically if we are allowing accessory, sorry, if we're not allowing accessory dwelling, while the province does allow accessory dwellings within the regulation, we may find challenges in aligning the data that they can provide with what we need, because we seem to be having the biggest challenge with regulating those secondary suites. That seems to be the dominant piece of our challenge in regulation. And so are we confident that we're going to be able to use the data that the province is providing to access that secondary suite non-compliance that we're looking to fix?
Through the chair, until we see what the province's data actually is, it's hard to directly be, like, confidently answer that question. But right now, in absence of the province stepping up, we get the data from host compliance. And quite often, suite or the description and all of the photos that are listed provide a very clear picture that it is a suite. And then we have all of our building permit information that we can cross-reference. So quite often, we're usually pretty confident. And then we've got bylaw enforcement to go and do onsite inspection if necessary to confirm.
And another question about the fine increase to $3,000. Is that specific to STRs? Or is that a blanket change to the community charter that allows all municipal fines to increase to a maximum of $3,000?
Through the chair, my understanding is that it's a blanket to just generally increase. So they amended the community charter to do that increase. Our recommendation is only for our short-term rental violations, not for other municipal ticket information violations.
And is there any concern that we, because the previous maximum was 1,000, so the maximum fine for anything other than short-term rentals right now would be $1,000? And then we have this short-term rental fine being at 3,000. Is there a concern that we may have a disproportionate fine for short-term rental compared to, say, our other bylaw infractions?
Through the chair. So just to clarify, the 3,000 increase was in the community charter, so that can apply to any type of bylaw violation. And we were recommending focusing only on the short-term rental increase for now so that we can provide a clear message to the community that we're extra serious about this bylaw violation. Did you want to add to that, Frank?
Through the chairs, everyone's correct. There's actually two different types of ticketing. One is the bylaw enforcement notice, which has a max of 500. And then there's the municipal ticket information, which is through the community charter. Those ones are a little bit more a challenge to issue, because unlike the BEN system, you have to locate the homeowner and personally serve that document, do a certificate of service, and then go back to the courts and submit your evidence. And the courts prefer municipalities to start off with the BEN system, because we're not being involved in the court. So there's two different levels of ticketing.
So from my understanding, what's this $3,000 ticket for one day? Which level of ticketing does that fit in? That fits into the secondary category?
Yeah, through the chair, sorry, that would fall within the municipal ticketing and information, not the bylaw notice enforcement bylaw.
I can add further clarification. So there's the two ticketing streams. One is really easy and quick to do. That's the bylaw enforcement notice. And then the municipal ticket information is a lot harder, because you got to issue it to the in-person. They're regulated at the provincial level by two different ministries. The only one that changed was the municipal ticket information stream. The Ministry of Attorney General does the bylaw enforcement notice, and that has not changed.
So that one remains at 500, the bylaw enforcement notice? Okay, so we're effectively going to make it more challenging for ourselves to issue a ticket, although the ticket's going to be larger?
Correct. If we use the municipal ticketing information stream, it's harder to issue to the person, because you have to give it to them in person.
Do we currently use the municipal ticketing stream, or do we use the easier stream?
Through the chair, we use the easier one, the bylaw notice enforcement one. And we can use that. And if we don't get compliance, then we can go to the MTI and go to court and then use that as our evidence, the BEN system. But generally, we start off with the BEN system, because it's, you can put the ticket in the mail. You don't need to personally serve it to the person.
But the BEN system has a maximum of $500, so we could not have a $3,000 STR fine and use the BEN system. Am I correct on that?
Just back up a bit. Through the chair, the province is talking right now about increasing the BENS to either 1,000 or 1,500. That's ongoing right now. We could start off with one ticket of a BEN and then go right to an MTI. We can do both, essentially.
So councillor Hamilton, before we continue, I'm just going to go to Ms. Glenday.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, appreciate the question around, is this disproportionately too high? If it's the only one we're going to use the 3,000 threshold for. And it's a great question. And at the same time, it's, I would appreciate if counsel, like that's more of a counsel call, I think. Appreciate staff clarity on how the tickets work, but it is a great question, but also for counsel to discuss. Yeah.
Counselor French?
Thanks Chair. So I'm looking at the table that tells us how many fines have been issued. 27 in the first year, 14 in the next, and then 18 in 2023. And I'm wondering if you could share with us some information, because I don't see it in any of the reports, on the success rate for collecting on those fines issued?
Through the chair, if they don't pay those tickets, then that goes to the collection agency. And then the collection agency will be in contact with the people who received the ticket for payment.
Okay, so from that, can you shed any light on percentages of how many of the tickets are going to collections? Just any further context?
Through the chair, all I could say is that after 30 days of non-payment, it goes to the collection agency. And then the collection agency will start calling. I do get monthly monies that come in from the collection agency. So to narrow it down to how many tickets, I wouldn't be able to do that just at this point in time.
Okay. I'm gonna stew on that. Thanks Chair.
Okay, Counselor Hamilton?
Yeah, I'm, wheels are turning on the enforcement here. So do I understand correctly that the province will be enforcing their standard of limiting short-term rentals to permanent residences? And then we would be responsible for enforcing the secondary suite part of it because that's part of our extension. Is that correct?
Correct. Exactly.
So in some ways, we're sort of, we're, we're going to have two arms of enforcement happening. The provincial arm of enforcement happening on principal residences and the municipal arm of enforcement happening on secondary suites. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah.
So I have a question and I'm, I'm wondering about if you can be, the timeline to implement this and/or the ability to adjust direction? Or if staff has given consideration to one of the things that, that I have some concern about. And I guess, given the behavior we've seen, I appreciate the idea of being a little more aggressive on, on the fines. I think in fairness to the people who didn't start an STR or people who sort of exited the, the market when we made the changes we made. But you know, we also have a couple major industrial projects which will compete for housing. And in, in my reading of our OCP and so on, our priority is sort of community resident housing. And then tourism accommodation and the sort of industrial worker temporary housing would be our, our last priority. We have some temporary use permits. We don't know how those are going to fall out. But that may impact in my mind, how we want to approach, at least over the next few years, some of these fines and regulations and so on. So I'm just wondering about sort of relative timing or if we've thought about how we balance those things?
Through the chair, I think what we need to do is just continue to closely monitor and be flexible depending on what we see coming out of the province's setup and what data they're actually able to get from Airbnb. The frequency with which that data is sent to us, how the delisting process is going. So we need to be just keeping an eye on things and staying fluid and checking in with you guys still on that annual basis.
Okay. And am I correct in thinking though, if, if counsel did feel like, oh, there's something going on here, it's fairly urgent. We could in relatively short order, make some adjustments to the, the fines and bylaws?
Through the chair, I think that would be at counsel's decision and direction to tell us what to do.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's not some rule that says you can only do this once a year or something. And, and that it would be up to counsel. If that was our priority, then we could do so. Whether or not it's a good idea is maybe another discussion, but okay. All right. So I'm not seeing any more hands. We, oh. I guess, okay. So I will, we do have some recommendations before us. Is someone interested in moving those? Counselor French, Counselor Anderson seconds. Counselor French, can I speak to them?
Thanks Chair. I recognize and acknowledge that significant amount of work has gone into not just this report that is in front of us now, but this entire program over the course of years. And I, I think that the course that we've been on so far has been effective enough. And I, I'm fully trusting that the work staff have done with the provincial government is sending us in the direction that's we've chosen a direction and we look to be going in a direction that's most appropriate at this time. Thanks.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I wanted to offer a couple of observations. My own choice when we began this short-term rental regulatory program, among the three options presented by staff was option C, the most constraining, if you like. And the reason for that was less so the issue of long-term rentals, encouraging them and protecting them. I do have a little bit of skepticism about that. And of course, that is shared beyond. It was more neighborhood impacts. In your presentation, you do refer to neighborhood fit as one of our goals. However, I would personally appreciate more attention to this, for example, in the enforcement metrics presentation. We have the number of public complaints received. But I, I would, I think it might be of value and of interest to the community to have a little bit more nuanced presentation of the types of complaints and their, their nuances, if you like. Is it, is it parking? Is it traffic or others? And, and Mr. Rawlings has mentioned some other types. I think that, that picture is important because I think one of the key goals for all of us was to mitigate neighborhood impacts. Secondly, Tourism Squamish makes the comment, and this is an issue just touched on about, I'll quote from them. A severe lack of visitor accommodation negatively affects the entire community, not just the tourism industry. And further, the tourism industry's accommodation problem is a problem for all Squamish industries. And I think this is true and that we should be careful about prioritizing or hierarchies within our demand for visitor accommodation. It is not just, with respect to industries, it's not just large run-of-the-river hydro or LNG projects or pipeline projects, but all manner of construction or out-of-town based service providers. And we should keep this in mind. It's important for the functioning of our community, for our economic development, that these types of service providers and employees based elsewhere, that they be given due consideration. Thank you.
Counselor Hamilton?
Yeah, thanks very much. So I'm going to try to give you feedback as clearly as I can in the areas that you've, that, in the areas of the recommendation. So in the staff recommendation to initiate the zoning and bylaw, business license bylaw amendments to align with the definition of short-term rental. My understanding is that's applying to the changing 30 to 90 days, completely in agreement with that. Regarding the municipal ticket ability, I'm, I'm in favor of increasing the, the fines for bylaw infractions. Provided we look at, I, I do think it's important that we do look at the, the level of our fines in the context of other fines. For example, when looking at our bylaws, blasting without permission in the District of Squamish is $1,000 compared to a one-night stay in an Airbnb seems disproportionate. Blasting in your backyard seems a little bit more severe than, than having a one-night stay in a, in an Airbnb. So I, not opposed to increasing it, but I would like to see it in a greater context. Regarding the, removing the monthly option for licensing, I'd prefer to see the monthly option there to allow owners to be more likely to comply with our bylaws. But I do recognize that that can be an administrative burden. So I think that in light of administrative efficiency, it is okay for me to see that removed as long as we also review, review the fees, because that could be one of the deterrents to compliance. I am concerned about our alignment or, or a lack of alignment with the provincial standards regarding principal residence and secondary suites. I think that by continuing to prohibit secondary suites while the province allows them, we are going to be doing more work than we need to do for a small part of this large puzzle. I think that we may end up doing more work than it's worth for eliminating or for adding the, the number of secondary suites to our rental swap stock. As we know, just because a suite comes out of the STR market doesn't mean it enters the long-term market. So to me, it's not clear that the cost of the enforcement of the secondary suites is going to be worth the addition to our rental stock. Thanks very much.
Counselor Greenlaw?
Thanks. Through the chair, I'll, I'll speak in favor of the, the staff recommendations. I'm, I'm in favor of streamlining the licensing system to have an annual license as opposed to the, to the monthly ones just for the administrative burden effectively. I'm also in favor of increasing the fines, though it sounds like these $3,000 fines aren't, aren't likely to be frequently issued, but it's still nice to have that serve as a deterrent for non-compliance. And I am, for the record, I'm also in favor of finding more people who aren't in compliance as a general rule. Thanks.
Thank you. I am also speaking in favor of the, the motion. I, I do support increasing the fees and becoming more aggressive in our enforcement. We've had a couple of years with a lot of warnings, a lot of public information education, and we've seen compliance rates remain fairly low. And I think, you know, like, like I mentioned in my comments, there were a number of people that decided not to enter the market because they knew it wasn't permitted by our bylaws. There was, it seems, law enforcement and so many people weren't complying until we made the changes. And then a lot of people did bring themselves into compliance and, and there was some significant cost and so on. So in fairness to all those folks, I think we do have to take this very seriously. I, I take my, my colleague's comment about the misalignment in fees for different things. Although the other side of that, I guess, is, is maybe we need to look at about where there are compliance problems. And I don't know that we have a lot of blasting in, unlawful blasting in neighborhoods. And so here, there is a compliance issue. And so maybe the higher fees are more appropriate here. Appreciate the efforts to reduce the complexity and simplify the, the licensing. And, and I do think it's acceptable to have a stricter regime in the province. The province gave us that ability, knowing that different communities would need different levels, so it'd have different circumstances. And so I think it's reasonable to take advantage of that. We, tourism is really important here and, and we don't have new hotels yet. And I, I think there are actually a number of benefits to a short-term rental. And so I, as much as we are regulating quite strictly because of the housing crisis, I think we do need to be very mindful of the impacts on tourism. And you know, I did spoke, speak to the impacts of large industrial projects to my colleague who, who had a slightly different opinion. I would say we do have areas of focus in our economic development plan. And we know if we want to be successful, we do need to focus our efforts. We also have a community climate action plan and a climate emergency. And so there's a lot of things that sort of direct us when we have limited resources. For example, housing, it does make sense to prioritize those things to what makes, what brings the most alignment with our official community plan. So you know, we may have to come back and have a look once we see what happens with TUPs and so on. And just make sure we are actually achieving the goals we want to have. But I support sort of moving forward with this and seeing where we go. We may just have to be a little bit nimble if, if things on the ground change. So with that, I will call the question. All those in favor? And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will break until 1:50. That's 1-5-0 for our next presentation. Thank you. So we're on recess. We will break until 1:50. That's 150 for our next presentation. Thank you. So we're on recess.
All of the proposed residential units would be secured as rental, including 20 market rental units and three affordable rental units. The unit mix includes seven three bedroom units, 13 two bedroom units, and three one bedroom units. The three one bedroom units will be secured as affordable rental housing. Staff support the proposed 1.86 floor area ratio. Given that the employment space provided exceeds the typical 25% requirement in the C4 zone, and all of the residential units will be secured as rental. The massing of the proposed building is setback 6.8 meters from Cleveland Avenue on the third and fourth stories. This setback increases to 12.3 meters for the fifth story. While these setbacks are less than the 14 meters recommended in the draft downtown Squamish Viewscape study, staff are supportive of the proposed upper story setbacks from Cleveland Avenue as they exceed the current requirements in the C4 zone, and the residential component of this project is market and affordable rental units. Staff also note that the important views of Mount Garibaldi are preserved with proposed 6.8 meter setback. The applicant has advised that a 14 meter setback from Cleveland Avenue would render this lot undevelopable. The draft downtown Squamish Viewscape study also recommends a four meter setback from Winnipeg Street, which this project is also not meeting. A zero meter setback from Winnipeg Street is proposed to maximize employment space, the number of rental units, and accommodate required parking stalls. The trade off between public realm view areas and employment space with rental and affordable housing is an important consideration in this location. The applicant has provided a massing and Viewscape analysis, which shows the massing of the project from the noted viewpoints in the Viewscape study. Staff consider that with the except the exception of the views of Mamquay Mountain, which would likely be lost under any redevelopment proposal, the important public realm view corridors are partially maintained under this proposal, while also delivering well sized employment space in a key location and maximizing a critical critical housing form being market and affordable rental. This rezoning application does not trigger the community amenity contribution policy, as all the residential units proposed will be secured as either market or affordable rental. While CACs are not triggered for this application, the applicant is proposing to secure three one bedroom units as affordable rental housing in perpetuity. Typical frontage improvements would be will be provided should the application move forward to a building permit application. These would include the construction of a corner plaza on the northeast corner of Cleveland Avenue and Winnipeg Street. The following items will be secured in a land development agreement. The applicant will enter into a housing agreement to secure the 20 units as market rental housing and three units as affordable rental housing in perpetuity, securing the construction of the enhanced plaza space at the northeast corner of Winnipeg Street and Cleveland Avenue, including the proposed building setback on this corner, that the applicant will enter into a no gas covenant for the residential portion of the building only, so that no natural gas will be permitted or provided to the residential portion of the building, and a statutory right of way over the district's existing sanitary line which crosses the property. To inform the community per policy, the project was posted to the district's development showcase, and a development sign has been posted to the site. No comments or requests for public information meetings have been received to date. So the staff recommendation is that the committee provide feedback on the upper the massing and the upper story setbacks. And if the committee is satisfied, to direct staff to bring forward the rezoning for consideration of first three readings at a future regular council meeting. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? Counsel Hamilton?
On the on the drawings, there's on the massing drawings and and there's actually on one of the architectural drawings there, there were there's power lines along Loggers Lane, and the building's fairly close to the power lines, I assume, and that's all within safety regulations. But do we have a plan for the overhead power lines along Loggers Lane to eventually put them underground? And would that be part of this development agreement, this LDA?
Through the chair, I believe at some point in the future, the plan is to underground the power lines, but that is a significant project. And it also requires BC Hydro being willing to do this work at the same time. So it's likely that cash and lieu for that work would be collected through the servicing agreement process.
And that that would be happening after the LDA. That's not normally part of an LDA. Do I is that do I understand your answer correctly?
Yes, that's correct. It is not uncommon for when certain projects like this or other types of frontage improvements, where the district would take cash and lieu for that work to complete it at a future time, because it's not practical to complete it when the development is happening.
Counsel French?
Thanks, Chair. I'm curious to know, based on the rental component for the residential, does that potentially qualify this project to go into our priority stream? One of the five, I believe, is the number that we have going at any one time?
Through the chair, yes, it would. However, the the that queue is currently full, but should one drop out, it could go into that that stream.
Okay. And I'm I'm also curious about the affordable units, the three one bedrooms. Is there a potential role for Housing Squamish to play in any way whatsoever with regards to those three units?
Through the chair, there is likely a role to this discussion has not happened with the applicant at this time, but there's likely a role that they would be involved in managing the waitlist to get into those units, as is typical with other projects where it's developer owned affordable housing.
Thank you.
As a rezoning, can you remind me what the expectations are on bike parking here?
Through you, Chair. The bicycle parking does meet the requirements in the zoning bylaw. It is, I believe it is detailed on one of the data sheets in the architectural package. But they're showing, I believe they're showing bicycle. Yeah, there's bicycle parking on the first floor. And there's also the ability to provide bicycle parking stalls within the units themselves. But given this is a rezoning application, that that level of detail would be seen at the development permit, should it go to that stage?
Okay, and then possibly a similar question, which maybe belongs to DP, but accessible units and units convertible to accessible, is that something we deal with now or at DP?
Through you, Chair. Should counsel want to secure amount above what's required, that would be something that we would want to secure at the rezoning in the land development agreement. Otherwise, the the unit won't be won't be designed in detail until this project moves to a development permit.
Mr. Van Nyskes?
Thank you. That's a really good question, and it's relevant now because the province is moving through building code changes to increasing the accessible unit standards in in the province in general. So staff don't recommend that that we essentially try to get try to determine what is the appropriate level, because that those conversations are happening at the building code level, and it will be, we're expecting that either this year or next year, there will be changes to the code that will mandate all projects to meet a much higher standard than they need to meet today.
Okay, and would that mean, though, missing that opportunity on this project? Or because it's building code, that would still apply to this project as well?
That's correct. It would be on the day of application for building permit, which means they have to get through the rezoning and development permit, servicing agreement, and then building permit.
Okay, and then final, I think, similar question. We made some changes to our our bylaws around the zero carbon step code and our expectations around commercial as well as residential units. And so I'm trying to understand if because it is for me a concern to not have a no gas covenant on the commercial side, but if that's already covered by the changes we made on that bylaw, would that apply here anyways? Or or is this something I need to raise if I'm concerned?
It would apply here already because it is a part, it would be a part three building. So those that option that we have for step three would apply here.
Okay, so am I correct then in assessing that it's effectively because of that bylaw change, a no gas covenant on the the commercial part effectively? Not a covenant, but a no gas restriction effectively?
Yes, as an option. So somebody could still build to step four and not have to commit to the no gas covenant. But we expect that most developments will take up the option for lower step code, which then requires no gas.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Hamilton?
And in this case, would they only need to be doing the commercial portion to step code four? And the residential could stay to step code three because there's a no gas covenant? The whole building would need to be step code four because the commercial does not have a no gas covenant?
That's correct. So to get the option for step three, you have to make a commitment for the whole building.
Yeah.
Okay, Counsel Greenlaw?
Thanks. Through the chair, I I have some concerns about the historical use of this land in that it used to be a gas station, right? And my geological engineering background tells me that that can be problematic. And I'm wondering what level of environmental baseline has to be met in order for this development to continue?
Through the chair, while I can't really speak to the specifics of that, they have received a certificate of compliance from the Ministry of the Environment, which outlines those specific conditions that they have to meet during construction and post construction. So they have met those requirements for their project to be able to proceed. If they hadn't had that, we probably wouldn't be bringing rezoning forward to counsel for discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel Anderson?
I wonder if staff may speak to the issue of a construction management plan, how staff might be working with the project proponent to minimize or mitigate the impacts on our downtown from a very large construction projects. We have experienced with this over the last couple of years. I wonder how staff might might give consideration to this, what tools we have. In saying this, however, I am aware that the project proponent is experienced in offsite construction methods and has interesting ideas and techniques to offer. But nonetheless, for any large project like this in the downtown, how might we we consider mitigating the impacts on the downtown through a construction management plan?
Through the chair, a construction management plan is required for any servicing agreement and building permit application, particularly for larger projects such as this. And given that it's on Cleveland Avenue, obviously, that would be a requirement and a consideration that would have to be dealt with through those two permitting processes before construction.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. So counsel, any more questions?
Why don't we go around for a round of feedback before we attempt a resolution? Then we can check in if staff has has what they need for clarity. So I'll start with Counsel Hamilton, if I may, go around clockwise.
Yeah, thanks very much. I see that the so the the primary feedback requested is on massing and upper stories. I see that this is a challenging lot. There's a lot of views to the view of the Mamquay. I completely agree that's going to be lost in any development happening on that lot. And I think that the the sort of the lessening of the restriction from, I think it was seven meters to four meters on that on the setback is perfectly appropriate, because I think this is a very, it is a rather constrained lot. So I am supportive of the massing and the upper story setbacks for the for the building. Do you want to do feedback on other things as well? Yeah. I find it interesting that the the proponent is proposing just a no gas covenant for the residential only. We've seen a lot of people committing to no gas covenants across an entire building, but I'm relieved to hear that our new and I don't forget the name of it, but the carbon, the effective carbon step code bylaw is going to be strongly encouraging some developers to restrict gas in order to get code step code three. Thanks.
Counsel Anderson?
Thank you. The matter of Loggers Lane has been arrested raised by my colleague. It is a truck route, of course, and it is a puzzle to improve the aesthetics and functionality of our Loggers Lane. We have more work to
We have more work to do. We don't know exactly what measures might be in store or available to us. But I do not think that we should add this as a, as an onerous expectation to be placed on this project. I am aware and council has been apprised of, over the last couple of years, that staff and the developer have given this consideration along the journey. So I'm satisfied with the facing to Loggers Lane for this particular project and the efforts that have been made. In community, secondly, in community discussion, the issue of trade-offs between aesthetic planning requirements and affordable housing delivery has been raised, and this of course relates to the massing. I think that we must keep in mind that for this location, there's a balance of values to be considered. And more than, or in addition to housing affordability, viewscapes and our goals for the downtown high street milieu, if you like, and the functions of this downtown location. So I'm satisfied with the efforts on, on massing and viewscape consideration. Thank you.
Counsel French?
Thanks Chair. I'm generally supportive of the massing that we're seeing for this project. And, and I do want to point out one thing that is more looking into the future. This particular project has got significant challenges with that Loggers Lane back wall, if we want to call it that, because of the utility corridor that was discovered late in the process, kind of surprised everybody involved. So I think for this particular project, the avoiding what kind of amounts to a pretty significant vertical wall on Loggers Lane is difficult. But as we see other projects coming for redevelopment on Cleveland Avenue that have got access to Loggers Lane, I would like to see a little more personality on those Loggers Lane walls, so that we don't end up with a total vertical wall along that side of Loggers Lane as we see redevelopments coming. And then as far as the upper story setbacks for this project, I, I think what we're seeing here is the best possible solution for this particular iconic lot in our downtown. And it provides, I think, an excellent balance between view preservation while also maximizing the square footage for residential at this block. Thanks.
Counsel Greenlaw?
Sure. Sorry, I just lost my notes once again. Yeah, the massing and upper story setbacks seem reasonable for this lot. I would prefer to see that the affordable housing units be a three-bedroom unit as opposed to three single-bedroom units, as that's where we're seeing our greatest needs. But in general, I'm just, I'm having a hard time supporting all, all of these developments that are coming through because I, I feel as though we're reaching a point where we're struggling as a community to keep up with this level of population growth. And I find that that aspect does not often make its way into these conversations and I really struggle with that. So in general, I do, I do think this is probably pretty close to the best that we can do on this lot, but I, I don't think I'm going to support it coming for rezoning.
Okay, thank you. So I appreciate the developer has been fairly receptive to a lot of council feedback over the years. And, and you know, there's been a fair bit of back and forth and changes. So thank everyone for working so hard on, on getting to something supportable. I do have some concerns about the upper level setbacks, especially on Winnipeg. You know, we are in a housing crisis and, and so there does need to be a priority on providing housing. But we, we need to make sure that we're finding ways to make that density livable. And you know, personally, I would rather compromise, given the location on some parking, we are focusing on making a walkable pedestrian-friendly downtown. And so I think that is where I would feel more comfortable providing some flexibility and maintaining some of the setbacks. But I know that is a bit more of a council discussion and, and so far I haven't been able to sway, I don't think, a majority of council to that perspective. But if I am going to compromise on those setbacks, you know, we're also facing a climate crisis as well as the housing crisis. And for me, a no gas covenant is probably across the whole building, a, a bit of a deal breaker. You know, I have some comfort in the, the bylaw changes and the trade-off between step four and step three, which pushes people. But I would feel much more comfortable and be easier to support this when it comes for first reading, if we just had that no gas covenant across the whole building. You know, there's some trade-offs there and I think that gets me to the point where I could make the trade-offs for some of the upper level setbacks. And, and so I hope the developer takes note of that and gives that some serious consideration. And I would say too, and I understand this is more for the DPA stage, I believe, but we do need to pay attention to Loggers Lane. I think we've talked about a lot of things we'd like to see to improve Loggers Lane. And so the, the impact of that Loggers Lane facing part of the building is, is something that we will need to pay attention to. So with that, I guess I'll ask staff, is there any more, is there any clarity or any more feedback you would like?
No, thanks Chair. I think that's quite clear.
Okay, so council, we have a, a couple of motions. One, or recommendations, does someone want to move those? Counsel Hamilton? Counsel Anderson, seconds. Any further comments? Counsel Anderson?
The staff report cites the fact that on October 5th, 2021, council did not offer a second reading for this development proposal. And I recall this meeting that, or my own rationale for that. I note that in the attachments, if you look at the massing and viewscape analysis and architectural drawing details, there isn't a lot of detail. In fact, earlier we were provided with more. That's not a concern of mine. In hindsight, I think that the discussion should have better been focused on, not been focused on the development permit stage details. My own vote last time, and I recall being allied with former Mayor Elliott, we were concerned about foreign character. And what we did was collectively, we sent this development applicant on a two and a half year journey, an onerous one, perhaps stressful with unclear expectations. And I think that we need to all learn some lessons from this. I know all of us, including council, where do we come in on development permit stage details? And anyway, I'm pleased to, with the presentation that we've seen today with respect to development permit details, that's later. And that we just need to have our guidelines appropriate enough and, and serving us well enough so that staff can work with the development on those details. So that's my, in hindsight, mea culpa, if you like. I, I think it's important for us in our relations with people who want to invest in our downtown and invest in, in housing supply for Squamish, that, that this process be one that's clear to all of us and working well for all of us. Thank you.
Counsel French?
Thanks Chair. I support this iteration of the building massing and the setbacks. Feel that it's time to let this patient developer get moving on this project. And I say patient hesitantly because this has been a really long process for this particular property. And I agree with Counselor Anderson that the lack of detail in this report is totally appropriate at this time. I, I think that it's helped to keep us focused on the massing and the setbacks, which is what is needed at this point in, in the process. So the, and I'll note that the challenges with the utility right-of-way look to have been addressed, which, which is great news because it was a significant challenge to work around that utility corridor. The amount of commercial space has increased, the residential units are going to be rentals, which are needed. So I'm ready to see some action at this long-suffering empty lot in this key downtown intersection.
Okay, with that, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Counsel Greenlaw opposes, motion carries. And we are a little bit ahead of time. We don't need anyone for the LMLG discussion? Okay, I'm going to call a short recess. Hi folks, just to anyone watching online to let you know, we are coming back to the meeting at 2:30 to discuss LM, Lower Mainland Local Government Association Resolution. So we'll see you at 2:30. Thanks. Okay, welcome back, folks. We are back to the committee of the whole and we are discussing lower mainland local government association resolutions. I think we will start with councillor Anderson if there's anything you feel. Oh, and just to set the context of this. I think our goal here is to dig with any dig into any sort of concerns and so on about these resolutions. We will look to approve final drafts as a council either next week or the following week. So this is more of a almost a bit of a workshop. Are there questions or concerns that we want to try getting addressed before these come back to us for approval in a in a week or two? So with that councillor Anderson, I'll let you address your resolution and maybe just speak to what you're trying to achieve and why it's important.
Certainly. Shall I read it out? We have the public paying attention to three clauses chair or shall I just jump to general observations?
Why don't we follow the U V C M practice a little bit and read just the resolved piece and then we can sort of discuss around that.
Very good. The final. I forget what the label is is an acting enabling clauses therefore be it resolved that the Union of B C municipalities request amendment of the local government act. To give the land title and survey authority statutory authority to accept notices of excessive or extended services agreements. That's a term used, but it can also these can also be referred to as late comer agreements to be registered on property title. So registration on property title. Is what we want to achieve through an amendment to the local government act. Now I'll go down to the last two sentences in my background here as follows. Without the clarity and security offered by registration of the late comer agreement on property title. There are potential risks and increased transaction costs for local governments and property developers. Risks financial for the municipality or surprises for the property owner or developer. And by transaction costs, I refer to well than extra communications and negotiations that happens when we're confused about what's what on property title or what is not on property title. The last sentence here, looking into the future, secure late comer agreement instruments will be increasingly necessary and important for local governments in developing or ensuring development. Of advanced infrastructure to cope with community growth. Our engineering department is projecting that we're going to get into these situations where late comer agreements, the need for them is going to become more common. The local government act spells out all manner of circumstances where local governments can or must register covenants and other types of agreements with the land title office. Late comer agreements are overlooked. They're a missing piece. So this picture of all the expectations that are in the local government act is also reflected in the land title and survey authorities help guide manual. It's very detailed. It's constantly being updated, but again, what is missing is this anomaly or gap is late comer agreements. Finally, I'll note that just as this resolution draft resolution is being put together. The engineering department did receive a reply from a request for information from the land title and survey authority which said. Yes, we needed in the local government act statutory authority to register late comer agreements on title. So it was nice to have that confirmation about what is needed from the land title office.
Okay, thank you. And I just wonder for folks that aren't aware or have forgotten. Not mentioning any names such as my own. Can you clarify what exactly a late comer agreement is?
Only that is these are in in our the two whereas clauses we spell out where it's found in legislation. But otherwise, a late comer agreement is an agreement between local government and the landowner who subsidize and develops land and is required to provide. Excess or extended services and now these are. Road, water, sanitary or storm drainage systems. This, these are specifically the types of services that are that are involved in the late comer agreements. They're in consideration here.
And so for clarity, if I'm doing a development, I need a road for my property. But to make that road functional and useful, it extends past several properties, so I pay for it. But as part of the late comer agreement, subsequent developers. Will essentially pay me or the municipality back for that extended piece of road that that I've built as part of my development. Is that correct?
In general, yes, that captures it.
Okay, council, any comments or questions or concerns about this resolution? That's our Hamilton.
I initially had one question which you answered in your introduction, which was why was it removed and are we just requesting them to put it back? But it seems to me when you're in your in your introduction there that. That the survey office wants it there, just probably in a different way than it was there before. It looked to me like before it was sort of a comment we put and they want us to have the regulatory authority to to implement it onto the title. So that makes much more sense to me. Thanks.
Our engineering department has related that over the past few years, they have made inquiries or sought to. Use what's called a form 17 notice to register a late comer agreement and been receiving these replies. We don't accept these any longer. So doing further research, it has turned out there's various law firms that work on this and they have clarified that. They in fact have stopped doing it because they realize the the land title office that is do not have statutory authority to do this. Whereas they do have statutory to do all manner of things in terms of registration, just not late come agreements. So the land title office presumably is just trying to be. Square and up to speed and keeping in alignment with legislation. So this has been anomaly and it was noticed by the land title office or acknowledged by them now a few years back. Now hopefully through this resolution, we can help the land title office and our own situation.
Councillor French.
Thanks Chair. Councillor Anderson, I'm just thinking ahead to when this potentially hits the floor at L M L G A. In your maneuvering around various touchpoints with folks from around the province. Are other communities looking for this, looking for something along this lines for solutions in their own town?
Yes, it seems so. And we we make this observation from looking at various law firms. And then they're they put out these blogs or newsletters and there are a number of references to this problem. So presumably there's an audience for this problem around B C with different municipalities that are tied into legal advice on on late comer agreements.
Around B C with different municipalities that are tied into legal advice on on late comer agreements. Okay, so I'm not seeing any concerns. It seems like there's good agreement and support for that resolution. So I think we'll move on to. B C assessment resolution from councillor French.
Okay, thanks Chair. And the action clause in mine is therefore be it resolved. The province of B C update the assessment act and the rules guiding the appeal board. Such that the number of drastically under assessed properties year over year are significantly reduced. Now, in in getting into the background on this, I'll just refresh the memory of council that I emailed. A numbers document out to everybody because what I'm about to go through is pre number intensive. So I thought it would be helpful to just send out my example numbers ahead of time. But here goes. So basically, this is a fair taxation discussion issue. The current system allows large valuable industrial, commercial institutional, we shorten that up to I C I. Those property owners or some of them to pay substantially less tax than market valuation suggests they should be paying. So when large I C A property owners pay less than market valuation suggests. It means all other property owners are paying more than their fair share in property taxes to make up for the undervalued I C I properties. And the best way to explain this is to take a look at examples and there are many all across the province. So the commercial properties. I'll just identify them as being in the Garibaldi Estates area of Squamish. With an assessed 2024 value of 15.5 million dollars. In 2023, those same properties were valued at 15.9 million. The properties were sold in 2022 at a price of 22.1 million. So two years after the property sold, the assessed value still 7 million dollars below the sale price. Over on the B C R yards or beside the B C R yards, property on Government Road, the 2020 assessed value was 506,000 dollars. Then the assessment dropped in 2021. Can you believe that? It dropped. The next year to 502,000 dollars. 502,000 dollars. So the 2022 assessed value was 1.6 million. So. It did increase. And then in 2023, the assessed value was 2.5 million. The property was sold in 2023. At a price of 3.5 million. So the 2024 assessed value now is 3.1 million, still 400,000 dollars below. What the market says it's valued at. And this is happening all over B C. 8636 Oak Street in Vancouver, the assessed value in 2022 was 13.4 million. The assessed value in 2023 was 12.4 million. The property sold for 18.5 million. And the 2024 assessed value is 10.9 million. This is a 5 million dollar discrepancy between assessed market. Our assessed value and market value today. And one more example, a block of properties on 96th Avenue at Port Kells in Surrey was assessed in 2022. At 5.2 million. The 2023 assessment was 6.8 million. The property was sold in 2022 for 10.4 million. So there's a market and assessed value difference in the millions of dollars on this particular property. All these properties fairly straightforward sales, no oddities like zoning changes or environmental issues that are discovered after the fact. No major property improvements or anything else to significantly potentially impact the property values of all the examples that I've just shared. And almost every community in B C has similar examples, Kamloops, Kelowna, Caslow, Prince Rupert, Prince George, Port Alberni. These are not one offs and they're not rare oddities. You can find examples. All across the province where discrepancies like this are causing accurately assessed properties to ultimately pay more. Than they should be to make up for the under assessed I C I lands that are close by. So that's my rationale for wanting endorsement to take this resolution to L M L G A.
Okay, council, questions, thoughts, comments? I have one. I'll start off maybe. Do we have a sense of I'll just sort of call it we identified an error rate in. I C I properties. Do we know if there's a comparable error rate in residential properties? Like, is this, you know, there's just a high error rate in general in assessing property or is there something? Do we know that there's something unique for I C I properties?
Okay. I don't know the answer to that. Derek Hallaway is a former B C assessment. Employee who has been my primary point of contact on all this. I'll ask him that and see what he comes back with. I do know that the quote unquote accuracy rate for residential properties is way higher. Than what we see in the I C I sector. It's it's way closer to market value than I C I. Although some would tell you even residential is unacceptably far off.
Okay, and I guess that's sort of my feedback in terms of the resolutions. In general, I support the the concept. And I just wonder if it would be stronger if we could be very clear about, you know. Why or, you know, what is the difference in magnitude of error or, you know, why is there a particular problem in I C I? If we know the cause, great, but even if we just know. That it exists, like there's a 20% higher error rate in I C I and that's why it deserves investigation and just. Something in that neighborhood, I think, would make the the ask a lot stronger. Councillor Hamilton?
Yeah, in that in that area, I think that so the. The requests speak specifically to the appeal board. I would guess, and I have no data on this, but I would guess that appeals for high value properties. Are much greater than appeals for a residential property, a high value I C I property. Because there's a lot more to gain by an I C I property taking a valuation from 25 million to 20 million, right? And so I guess they they were probably more motivated to to appeal. And so. Is there a way to or should we try to focus this request? More on the procedures of the appeal board than the idea of the number of under assessed properties. Because in a rising market, all properties become under assessed. Right? I don't actually have a suggestion that can help us along the way, but.
So off the top of my head, I'm going to say. So off the top of my head, I'm going to say the answer is simple no. So one of the things that this addresses is the fact that nobody's appealing these. There's no appetite for these owners to appeal the assessments because it doesn't benefit them in any way to have the assessment closer to market value. And there's just nobody out there who is appealing any of these assessments because there's no direct benefit for anyone to appeal this discrepancy. And that's one of the reasons that Mr. Halloway has got his eye on this is nobody's got their thumb on this one to find a way to bring an increased level of fairness in this scenario. And there have been previous resolutions at local government level and at UBCM that relate to the Appeal Board and changes to the Appeal Board. But all of those previous resolutions don't do anything to address this situation.
So I think I know what Counselor Hamilton is going to say, and this is maybe some clarification to be had here.
Yeah, I guess I'm assuming that the appeals have brought the property values down and then they stay down because B C Assessment sort of probably bases it on the previous year. But these aren't properties that have been appealed to go down, then my understanding. Okay, thank you.
Counselor French?
So in coming up with this wording, I struggled with whether or not there was any benefit to even include the phrase Appeal Board in the resolution, with one of the thoughts being that it could be a distraction. And now I'm seeing how that was a relevant thought at the time. And there might be value in taking out that specific wording about the Appeal Board.
Yeah, I'll just, before I go to Counselor Anderson, interject for a moment. We had some discussion yesterday working with Ms. Mulligan on a couple of the resolutions. And I know at times people say the motion should be very specific to the change that should happen. And so from that perspective, maybe mentioning Appeal Board, if that's where the change needs to happen, makes sense. However, I think the way, the direction we took with our resolution was let's focus on the outcomes and try to be specific on the outcome we want to see and leave the province the freedom to figure out how to achieve that outcome. So it seems there can be a bit of debate at UBCM on that, but that's sort of what we struggled with a bit yesterday. And I'm in favor personally of more focusing on the outcome as opposed to unless the, we want to see a specific outcome in terms of the Appeal Board, I'm not sure personally that that needs to be mentioned. But.
Counselor Anderson?
I'll start out with a bit of a footnote. I noticed that the 8636 Oak Street has been zoned residential for quite some time. And I'm not sure how that may fit. You may want to, you know, just make sure that that does fit within the pattern that you're trying, that you would like to illustrate. You don't have a title, Counselor French. And in thinking about that, and also about the comments our chair has just made, you describe it in your background or to us that this is a fair taxation discussion. And you, the second, whereas this results in unfair taxation. I'd like to, if you were to go online and research B C Assessment and fair taxation, there's a wealth of discussion on the fact or on the observation that industrial lands are unfairly taxed. And they also, this also comes up with development cost charges. How are, is there a balance of fairness here with respect to the services they require and the DCCs are obliged to pay? But to back to taxes, property tax rates, relative tax burden, tax ratios, how this has all evolved since variable tax rates were introduced in 1985, and there's a clear pattern of trend of industrial lands and especially heavy industry being just increasingly taxed and residential is more or less flat, except in Squamish where we have no industry and we residential has a greater burden. But this issue of tax burden and fair taxation, normally in the conversation about property tax in B C is industry complaining. Where you're referring to, what my suggestion in the end here is that you, is that we focus attention on assess, on assessed values. And I would suggest we be careful about using unfair taxation or fair taxation, because that's going to lead us into all kinds of other issues where some stakeholders are going to have something different to say, or they'll come forward with different observations and experiences. So if we somehow through the title, we might focus it on the, the issue you are addressing is accuracy and no incentive for owners to appeal, overvaluation. And finally, coming back, coming to Counselor Hamilton's observation or question, how might we in the therefore clause address, is it procedures? Is it guidelines? Should the Appeal Board be mentioned? Maybe it should. But what, what are, what act, what does Mr. Halloway, your correspondent, suggest? Is it, is it the Assessment Act? Is it legislation needs to be changed? Or is it the guidelines and procedures for assessing property that B C Assessment uses? I come, I think of stoppage appraisal. It's the same issue. And there it's procedures rather than legislation. I don't know. But that would be a question. How can we focus attention on the area of fair taxation that we're interested in and not have the observers point out these other debates that have been going on for years about over taxation of industry?
That's, that's all great feedback. Counselor Penagill, your feedback was helpful as well. Take all that back and do some retooling.
Can just add to my colleague's comments. I think what I heard in there is some thought that possibly B C Assessment is trying to offset overly high industrial mill rates with undervalued properties to respond to over taxation of industry, perceived over taxation of industry. And I guess, you know, my thought is that that makes for a very convoluted and complicated tax system, which I don't think, I think the better, if the problem is industry tax rates are too high, you probably need to look more at maybe limiting municipal mill rates or something like that. But sort of distorting the assessments to achieve that end really seems to be confusing. And I don't know if, if we want to confuse your resolution with that, I think, but it speaks to me. Maybe there's some worthwhile comment, and maybe it's just in the speaking to it on the floor, the fact that, you know, to make this sort of whole system manageable for us and the public is B C Assessment should assess the actual values. Municipalities should have the freedom to set our mill rates accordingly. And if there's some balance that needs to happen there, then let's have a conversation with the province about our taxation ability and our mill rate restrictions. And maybe that's where that belongs. And so for me, that seems like a bit of a, something that shouldn't be handled necessarily by your resolution. I like the idea of fair tax or accurate assessments across the board.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Arthur, did you want to add something?
I just need to remind the committee that we require recommendations to be put forward to council next week for ratification to go off to LMLGA. So I'm not sure process wise, if you prefer to make a motion at the end or vote individually on each of the proposed recommendations.
Okay, I have, because we have a couple of folks not here. I guess I was hoping to find a way to sort of express general support for the resolutions, but give us some wiggle room to, for folks to present final or send in final texts to appear on the agenda.
So maybe if I could make a suggestion that the committee recommend that essentially the topics or the recommendations put forward or be forwarded to council on February 20th for ratification or, or moving forward to LMLGA for consideration, something along those lines.
Okay, thank you. And I guess for now, I'll try and do one resolution at the end. If we have ones that are particularly contentious, we'll see how we deal with those. I'm going to skip over, actually, just because I was involved in discussions on the two environmental assessment and large project related ones. Counselor Stoner, apparently there's some, lots of exciting announcements at the Housing Forum. And so she is pulling one of her proposed resolutions. But there's another one on transit. So maybe just to make sure we don't miss her resolution while she's not here, let's tackle Counselor Stoner's next, which is increasing reliable transit funding to support growing communities. The inaction clause, I guess, is therefore be it resolved that UBCM urged the province of B C and B C Transit to commit to funding transit service expansions where requested and to move from annual funding agreements to three year funding agreements to allow for more certainty. I think between this and the whereas clauses, this one is relatively explanatory. But is there anything that counsel would like to discuss or ask or think about on this one? Counselor Hamilton?
I think this is just pretty clearly a topic that's going to be supported, very likely supported by everybody across the lower mainland. I think this is an issue that comes, is coming up in many communities. So I do see a lot of, this is very clear. We're requesting more funding and that the funding agreements are for three years. I think it's a pretty clear resolution. So I'm pretty supportive of it.
Yeah, thanks. And I will sort of note that for our own funding for not for profits and service agreements, we've looked to go to multi-year times for many of the same reasons, term, multi-year terms for the same reasons, which is to provide a little more certainty to not for profits who are providing important services and can really benefit from that certainty. So Counselor Anderson?
I'm happy with the resolution as is. There's a typo in the last therefore clause, move to from, just remove the to, otherwise I think it's fine as is from my point of view.
Okay, thank you. Now, I see you have blue sheets. Do folks have accumulative impacts and assessment fees resolutions? The cumulative fees one or cumulative impacts, one that was in your package has been updated. So the current ones are here. I will maybe hand these around. And I will start for the, actually, start with the assessment fees one. This one is a little more spearheaded by Mayor Hurford. And just for clarity, we had some discussions with Kate Mulligan for some more background and feedback from staff's perspective on some of the struggles we've been having, the motions we've been making at council. And both of these resolutions together are meant to encapsulate some of those things. The assessment fees one is meant to avoid the circumstance we've seen here, but could be relevant to any project where you get a very large project in town and the community just doesn't have the capacity to process all the permits and applications and so on at a time, on a timeline that a proponent might wish. And, you know, in consideration of all the other demands on a, in the local government. And I think the smaller the local government, the larger this issue becomes. And I will mention too, there may be some final edits to these. We hadn't had a chance to circle back as a group. And so these, Ms. Mulligan drafted these versions of these. But I thought would be worth sharing them for your consideration now. So Counselor Anderson and then Counselor Hamilton?
Counselor Penagill, did you want to take on the first cumulative impacts first and then assessment fees? Or I had comments on each of them, but do you want to?
Yeah, I was going to be difficult and do assessment fees first, just because that, so the mayor had been taking the lead on that one. He's not here. I just don't want to miss anyone's resolution. He's not here. I feel responsibility if mine is sort of last.
Right then. On the assessment fees, the, I wondered whether in your discussion with our staff member Kate Mulligan, whether the issue of provisions for First Nations fees or their costs be recognized, the mechanism for that, how it compares to what we're proposing here? Did that come up at all? It seems analogous.
It did come up, and we considered including a specific reference to that. I think in the end, we decided that it was, could be challenging to compare ourselves or equate ourselves to the circumstance with First Nations. So we wanted to speak in general to the issue we are facing without trying to make any sort of implication of equivalence. And so there was discussion and that was the rationale for not mentioning that explicitly.
Understood. I wondered however, whether there's something to look at. If there is a mechanism, how, how does it, how is it addressed? How is First Nations support, support for First Nations participation addressed? Is there a mechanism there that might be referred to? Just a question.
Yes, thank you. It's a good point. And it's something we can maybe speak to on the floor. And there's another section. I'm sorry, the title of it escapes me now, but it does talk about the ability for the ministry to require proponents to pay for certain aspects of a project. I think this is a little more explicit about trying to identify specifically what we need. And instead of making it discretionary, be, try and make it more like, if you want to see these projects go, this needs to be a requirement. And so in our, we will have backgrounders and that, that will speak in more detail than I'm doing now to that part of the legislation and why changes needed there. Counselor Hamilton?
I can certainly see where this, this idea could help both industry and local government come to amicable agreements that are of benefit to both. And I think my wheels started to turn to like, what are the details of this kind of, of an assessment fees? How do you decide how much an appropriate assessment fee is and all that? But I think that I'm getting ahead of myself. And think that the idea that a local government is responsible to its current citizens and businesses, and they are sized appropriately to deal with their current residences and businesses, residents and businesses, their current community. And when a major project approaches with a proposal, if it's a small community, they're not going to be sized appropriately to manage the requests, the, the questions from the proponents. And I think that because these major projects are by and large provincially approved, I think that there is a responsibility on the province to give the local governments the tools to be able to engage and interact with major projects in a, in a fair way, so that everybody can come out with, with a, with a good deal.
Yes, thank you. And we did have some discussion around that too. And the fact that there may be, you know, taxation and other benefits on the backend of these projects for those local governments. But that doesn't mean they have the funds upfront to do the work and that's And and that's, you know, the, the, the challenge here is making sure that funding and that capacity, those resources are there upfront when the work needs to be done, as opposed to several years down the road when the thing is built. So any other thoughts or comments, Counsel Anderson?
Wondered whether you'd given further thought or will give further thought to the title to just to give a clear picture of the the scope and purpose behind the resolution.
Yeah, I appreciate that. This was just a really quick and dirty draft title I threw on. But yeah, definitely noted that feedback. So I think move on to the next one. And I think it's our last one for discussion, unless I'm missing one, is the cumulative impacts resolution, which again had a fair bit of discussion on. Read the resolution clauses, therefore be it resolved that the province of BC require the assessment and mitigation of cumulative effects, whether temporary or residual, as part of major project assessments and subsequent permitting processes. And be it further resolved that interdependent projects are required to undergo combined assessment and permitting processes. So some of the discussion we had around this is, you know, it reflects numerous resolutions we have made over the years regarding a couple of big projects here. The, the, when we, when Ms. Mulligan looked into the legislation, it does allow for the ministry to do some cumulative assessments, but it's really focused on what it determines residual cumulative impacts. And it ignores temporary ones, which can actually be quite significant and end up having lasting impact. So if you think about the impacts on the housing market, the impact of multiple projects to place a burden on a municipality at the same time, these sorts of things are the sorts of things which, you know, we are running into and struggling with and need to be considered. And then there is, you know, as we have heard from our staff, the challenges when there are, you know, for whatever reason, if the ministry decides that projects can or should be considered separately, when the timelines and everything about them is interdependent, maybe even it's a single funder, it makes it much more challenging when our staff has to manage the consolidation of timelines and planning and coordinate multiple engagements and so on. So what we are requesting here is a greater level, an expectation of a greater level of coordination of 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 these sorts of projects because of the impacts on the local government, when when the local government is tasked with putting all the pieces together. So questions, comments? Counsel Anderson?
Firstly, I wonder about the use of the term permitting, isolated planning, assessment and permitting, whether might, might, it might be considered that approval processes would be a better fit? I'm not sure. Because there may be all kinds of challenges with unified permitting regimes. But approval processes, just a suggestion as a substitute for permitting. Secondly, I'm thinking of a perspective from the north. We have a large LNG project, Akidmat, and a large pipeline project, Northern Gaslink. And they are also major project assessments. They are also wholly independent, interdependent projects with interconnected timelines. But the circumstances are different. That that pipeline crosses many jurisdictions and the its construction doesn't have the same concentrated cumulative impacts as as these two projects have within the District of Squamish. So my question or suggestion is that we, that in a given region, be more clear that of about the special circumstances we have, that the purpose of this is trying to address is that these are these are inter, interdependent projects with interconnected, interconnected timelines, major projects within a affecting a single municipality, if you like, or some, I'm trying to distinguish our circumstances from that of the two projects in the north. They look the same, but the pipeline project in the north has as different circumstances and context in, from the lens of this resolution. So the suggestion is, is there a way to geographically, provide some geographic context to the purpose here of of cumulative impacts, assessing cumulative impacts?
Yeah, thanks. So so two thoughts. One, in in terms of the permitting piece, the reason that language is in there, we wanted to capture that this isn't just about the EAO process. This is also about subsequent permits, although I do take your point about being mindful of the complexity and what we're really asking for. So give some thought to if if we can or should clean up the language. You know, I think it's, you know, the practical example we have is when there are, you know, five sources or four sources of affluent, how are we considering the cumulative impact of sort of that? Each one is a separate permit. Is there a mechanism to to consider that? That is being adhered to is that sort of thing is is what we're talking about here. So maybe that can be clarified. The other piece, I do take your point that maybe there's something we can add in terms of clarification about. It's not just that they're interdependent, but it's, you know, where is that intersection? And is the the consolidated planning in that focused on where there's intersection as opposed to where there's not maybe? And and I think, as I understand the process, along a pipeline, the engagement process is different or expectations may be different, depending on where you are geographically. And so along the same lines, maybe we can provide some language in there to to clarify that, you know, if if they're interdependent, but there there isn't an interaction in a specific place, then that cumulative assessment maybe isn't relevant and that engagement on that piece isn't relevant.
Cumulative impacts on who, on where? Maybe that's the way we can resolve this to distinguish ourselves from the northern example, because the province and the feds are going to say, yeah, you want this, but we're not going to be able to do that up north. So we can't consider the same solution for you as up north. But if we, if we locate the problem of lack of, of, you get my drift?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. It's good feedback. Thank you, Counsel French?
Thanks, Ture. Just checking in, this looks like another quick and dirty title. It's just simply cumulative impacts. I take it you'll put a little more thought into that and clarify the title.
Okay, so I'm not seeing anything more, so I will, oh, Counsel Greenlaw?
Yeah, I just have a thought following on Counsel Anderson's points is that it is totally a different situation and where we are and in the north. But I do think there does still need to be space for a conversation around the cumulative impacts that pipelines have on all of these communities. I don't know that this needs to be in this resolution, but that's just a thought of mine. But in general, yeah, I I think the resolution was pretty it. I think, and I think it's a really important conversation that has created a real power imbalance between individuals and industry. And so, yeah, I'm happy to see it addressed.
All right, thank you. So I will entertain a motion that the LM, the Lower Mainland Local Government Resolution topics discussed be brought forward at the next special or regular business meeting. And I'll leave that as the resolution. Counsel Hamilton, you moving that to secondary? Counselor Greenlaw? Okay, any discussion?
I'm disappointed I spent three hours on Counsel, Counselor Stoner's second resolution, but maybe we'll come back to that. It'll be a topic in in connection with her report and the mayor's report from the convention throughout today is certainly an important one. And I hope we can return to the discussion of the essence of that proposed resolution.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the details. By the sounds of things, that problem may already be solved. And so hopefully we don't actually have to discuss it. But I guess we shall see, and I look forward to hearing more about that as well. And I guess just ask on behalf of staff and probably a reminder mostly to myself to get our edits into staff as soon as possible for the next agenda. And we will have that discussion then. So thank you for a quick, quick discussion so far. I'm going to ask for a motion to close. Oh, oh, sorry. Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries? Okay, and I will entertain a motion to close. Counsel Hamilton, Counsel Greenlaw seconds. All those in favor? Okay, no one opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We are in closed and we will recess until.